Call the meeting at two oh one P M. And let you know that this is this public meeting. The public hearing and public meetings is being held by electronic participation. Pursuit to the municipality's procedural by law number twenty twenty dash zero two zero. As amended in section two thirty eight. Three point one of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended. The meeting will be live streamed on the municipal's miss pally's YouTube channel. And the video recording will be uploaded to miss pally of Trent Hills website following the meeting. I would ask that the. For approval of the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda for the public meeting. Of August the fifth twenty twenty be received and approved. Can I remove her in second, please? Moved by Rick. Seconded by Rose. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, your worship still recorded vote through this process?
Oh, oh, yeah, I all in favor again, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotta get retrained.
Counselor English.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Callahan McLennan.
Yes.
Counselor Matt Caff.
Yes.
Counselor Redden.
Yes.
Counselor Tully.
Yes.
Counselor Brownie.
Yeah.
Mayor Craig.
Yes.
Married by seven, your worship?
Thank you. I could just read the fault, the sentence that was following the motion, I guess, which would have said, ask the clerk for a recorded vote. Disclosure of a peculiar interest. And I believe Rose is. On disclosed for item four F. So, public hearings and public meetings. These public meetings and public hearings and public meetings are being held in accordance with provisions of the planning act. The purpose of the meeting is for council members to hear formally here and receive public and agency comments. The intent of these statutory public hearings and public meetings is to receive public feedback. And incorporate it into a recommendation. Report from staff. No decision will be made during this meeting. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded for the purposes of a creation of a public record. Any property owner may file an application under the planning act relating to their property. The purpose of the public process in filing an application is to determine if the proposal is supported by local. And provincial land use policies. This process also seeks public input in order to determine if any issues identified. Have been or can be addressed. The applicants or agents will be given an opportunity to speak on behalf of their submissions. And to respond to questions arising from the discussion of these applications. Interested members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak in favor. Or in opposition to the application being dealt with at this hearing. All purposes, all persons addressing council must state their full name and address. And must direct their comments through the chair. Any information you provide at the public hearing, public meeting may be disclosed in a public record. If you missed the live meeting, had technical issues, or prefer to submit comments following the public meeting. You may email your comments to planning at Trent Hills dot C A. The municipal requires these comments no later than seven days after this meeting. To ensure the comments can be reviewed by the planning staff prior to preparing a final recommendation. Report to be heard at a future council meeting. Everyone clear? So, the first application. Is. B eighteen two twenty. And I'll turn it over to Jim.
Actually Liz is going to take us through the information, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public meeting and public hearing for severance consent application B eighteen twenty twenty. As well as zoning amendment application C O eight twenty twenty for Philip and Alana De Jong, Judy De Jong. It's for property located at part of lot sixteen concession ten and part of lot sixteen concession ten, both being on county road thirty five in the former township of Percy. The severance application proposes a lot line adjustment and lot addition between two existing properties. Approximately forty two point three five acres of vacant land will be severed. From ninety eight county road thirty five. This property has the existing residential dwelling and outbuilding. The severed portion will merge to the adjacent lands to the south. Which is currently point five one set point five one seven acres of vacant land. The retained portion will result in approximately five point five acre parcel. It contains the existing residential dwelling and outbuilding. The severed portion will result in approximately forty two point eight seven acre parcel of vacant land. And will be eligible for residential building permit. As noted, this application was filed in conjunction with the zoning amendment. So the zoning amendment is to recognize, I'm just going to switch screens here. The creation of one new parcel being the severed portion of severance consent application B eighteen twenty twenty. In an approximate size of forty two point eight seven acres of vacant land. The current zoning of the subject lands is agricultural and rural residential. The proposed zoning for the severed portion will be agricultural. And the proposed zoning for the retained portion. Being approximately five point five acres with the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings will be rural residential. We did circulate to Northumberland County and we have received comments for both the severance consent as well as the zoning amendment. That just kind of gives you the map of where the properties are and what is being proposed. And back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant or agent with us today? Okay. Are there any, any questions or comments from council?
Question about?
Yes, Gene.
Uh, I think Liz. Refer to the land being zone agriculture and. Rec. Residential. Is it prime ag?
Something just happened. It is a combination of, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, it is a combination of agricultural and rural residential. So the agricultural is prime ag. But we're not creating a new lot. We're just doing a lot line adjustment, which is permitted through the provincial policy statement unofficial plan.
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else, is anyone? Else wish to comment on the application? Okay, we'll go on to. Our second one. The, it's. Pardon? Our, our second one is severance consent application B nineteen twenty twenty. For Jason Bain. And. Liz, are you taking this one too?
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
This is the public meeting or public hearing for severance consent application B nineteen twenty twenty. The applicant is Jason Bain. It is for five properties being forty, forty one, forty two, forty three, and forty five Westview Road in the former township of Percy. The application proposes a technical severance to recreate five separate parcels which have merged in title under the name of the applicant. Each parcel currently has a separate assessment roll number and receives a separate tax bill. With it being a technical severance, we didn't have to circulate to any external agencies for comments.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Or an agent? Okay. Questions from council? Mike, did you have something?
Um. More a comment and I made it before and I'm sure Jim and Liz have, have heard this in the past of. The challenges of. These. Properties getting merged together for whatever reason when they're, they're not wanted, but it's. I'm sure you've heard it all. Before and I'm. Not sure if there's ever any way to get this to, to stop when they're unwanted mergers.
Well, I can say through you, Mr. Mayor, is that since they'll be subject to consent in this case, and we'll probably stamp all the deeds, they won't be able to merge again.
Thanks, Jim. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak on this? Okay, we will. Proceed to severance consent application B twenty. Dash twenty twenty for John Robinson and Carrie Anne Kidd. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing for severance consent application B twenty slash twenty twenty. As noted for John Robinson and Carrie Anne Kidd. For properties located at part of lot three concession three on Goacher Road and ninety eight Goacher Road in the former township of Seymour. The application proposes to merge two separate, separate adjacent parcels. The vacant parcel in concession three part of lot three Goacher Road will merge to the adjacent parcel to the south. Being ninety eight Goacher Road, which has an existing dwelling and outbuildings. Just to note, as these properties were previously created through the severance process. Unfortunately, we, we have to go through the severance process again. And somehow change the legal description in order for them to merge back into one parcel.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Okay, questions from council? No questions from council? There's no anyone present for against the application? And. That will do it for that one. We are now at zoning amendment application C zero six twenty twenty. For Curtis Ducey and Andrea Bowe. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public meeting for zoning amendment application C O six twenty twenty. The applicant is five one one eight two five Ontario Limited slash Bob Connor. In conjunction with Curtis Ducey and Andrea Bowe for property located at forty four Doxy Avenue North in the former town of Campbellford. The purpose and effect of the proposed zoning by law amendment is to recognize the area of one existing parcel. Being approximately sixty six feet of frontage by a hundred and sixty five feet deep. With an existing structure which is serviced by both municipal water and municipal sewer. The application proposes to rezone the subject property from general commercial to residential two. Which will permit a change of use to a multi unit residential dwelling as rental units. The applicants have provided an updated concept plan as well as a site plan. And we have received comments from one adjacent landowner, which was in the agenda package from Victoria Trudeau for consideration.
All right, as. Or either of the parties here for the. They joined us, okay? Questions from council? Up this second, whose hand was up? I just, we're just changing. Mike?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, what, just on, I took a quick view of, of the site plan. What consideration for parking is, is there on that plan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to bring up the revised site plan that does have the parking now?
Yeah, please.
That's there.
Okay, so the, is that, that's four spots at the back of the. Residents and. Two at the side. Is that what I see?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further, Mike?
No, thank you.
Okay, is, is there anyone else that, Ken?
Yes, the comment from Victoria Trudeau was on the shared driveway and I wasn't able to. See that shared driveway. Can you point out the shared driveway that's possible with how we're presenting this meeting today?
I think. There's an existing entrance to the property that's always been there. I'm not sure that it's shared with another property. Unless they meant it would be shared by all the tenants, which is quite common.
Of course, yes.
Yeah, it commented that they, they had two vehicles and that was going to be a problem parking, but I, when I looked at it, I couldn't see how their driveway interfered with this property, so.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll do further research before our report, but. This property should be able to be accessed individually and the parking contained on its own property.
Thank you. Okay, Kathy?
Question, just with respect to the, to the parking. Are there allowances made when we have multi use residential to count any parking on the street? Towards that, or do we try to have it self-contained?
Wherever possible, we try to have adequate parking on site. Obviously, there are buildings in the downtown where. Parking isn't available, in which case they. Do have to try and manage using on-street parking, but it can create difficulties in the winter when that's not permitted, so. It's good to have at least one parking space per unit, and in this case they have two spaces per unit.
Okay, and, and just further to that, this is in the downtown B I, B I A section, is it not? This is still part of the business district, even though it's on the secondary, on the, the Doxy. It is, is still part of the B I A and is still surrounded by other businesses, home-based businesses.
We did pre. Yeah, we did pre-consultation with the chamber and I'm not sure whether we did with the B I A as well. But that was a concern to start with, although. It's owned currently commercial. You'll, you'll remember that this previously was a church. And it's been used as a school, so it's never really had a commercial use. Even. Though it's in the commercial area of the Campbellford. Central Business District.
Did just final, final, all I'm trying to do, your worship is, is just sort of get a sense of what are, our obligations are in terms of creating residential. Versus creating business and trying to mix those two kind of components together, so. Everybody's happy, that's. And maybe, Jim, you can provide us some clarification on what our obligations are. And not.
Well, certainly it was a concern and that's why we talked to our partners in. Concerning the chamber in the business area, we did look at this, but as I say, we didn't feel we were taking away. Existing commercial space because it hasn't been used that way. And on the other hand, it is. A positive to try and create more rental housing, especially in the downtown where people have good access to the services they may be needing. So we're trying to strike that balance and we consult with those we think will be able to help us with those decisions.
Okay, anyone else? And anyone that's joining us, have any comments? Okay. We will proceed to zoning amendment application C zero seven twenty twenty. Cindy Sokak and Frank Perkins. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public meeting for zoning amendment application C of seven twenty twenty. The applicants are Cindy Sokay and Frank Perkins. It's for part of lot five concession eight R D Plan forty two, part five county road forty five, former township of Percy. The purpose and effect of the proposed zoning by law amendment is to recognize the area of one existing parcel, which is vacant land. Being approximately one point nine eight acres for residential building purposes. The current zoning of the subject land is rural environmental protection and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning will be special rural residential, environmental protection. And environmentally sensitive. As part of the pre-consultation process. A hydrologic evaluation has been conducted and reviewed by the municipality as well as lower trench conservation authority. And we had also sent the application down to Northumberland, Northumberland County to provide comments in which they had no concerns and comments were attached.
Thanks, Liz. Is the applicant with us on this? Anyone? Okay, questions from council? Hearing none, seeing one. Anyone have any? Questions for against? Mr. Connor, how are you?
Wonderful.
Fine, thank you. So. We have no, no questions on that. Then we will go to. Zoning amendment application C ten twenty twenty for Harry Boss Camp and Caroline Bingley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is zoning amendments application, the public meeting. For Harry Boss Camp and Carolyn Bingley. It's for property located at part of lot seven concession four county road thirty in the former township of Seymour. The purpose and effect of the proposed zoning by law amendment is to recognize the area of one severed, or sorry, one existing parcel being approximately. Two point zero eight zero acres of vacant land. It's to be serviced by municipal water and a private sewage disposal system. The application proposes to rezone the subject property from rural residential to a site-specific highway commercial zoning. Which will permit the change of use and construction of a farm-style market slash flower shop slash greenhouse. We did circulate to Northumberland County for comments and we did receive comments from one adjacent landowner. And Caroline's has provided a business expansion proposal for the subject properties for council's review. Which I can scroll through. As you'll note, they are also looking at purchasing the adjacent parcel to build a residential dwelling, so it's only the one parcel that's subject to the zoning amendment. And. Basically a concept of, of their business proposal.
Thanks, Liz. Do we have anyone with us? Is Caroline or? Mr. Boss Camp here to ask any questions? Is anyone? No, council, any questions from council? Uh, Rick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through Jim or Liz, I'm assuming there'll be a site plan. Presented to council at some point in time, is that correct?
Well, they did a rough site plan to attach to the application. I'm sure when they get ready to build, there'd be more detailed up or. A more detailed site plan that could be brought forward.
Yeah, I just, it kind of bothers me a little bit about the, and we're on the subject about parking and certainly you would have to. Walking in there due to thirty highway, of course.
Yeah, can certainly be shown in more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mike and then Kathy?
Thanks, Mayor. The applicants are here in case we do need them. My question is on the county's response. Sorry, I'm just trying to find it here. They talk about the installation of a post and page wire fence. It's the first time I've ever seen this request from the county and we've done a number of county properties before. Is there any clarification on, on why this request is being made on this specific property?
But I through you, Mr. Mayor, I have to agree. It's the first time we've seen this request. The other thing to note is that this is a rezoning application and. Conditions can't be applied to it, so I think there was some confusion at the county level that they might have thought this was a severance that we had submitted to them. We'll also note that these lots were created. Previously and were subject to. Comments from the county that were implemented at that time.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Kathy?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that as, as Mike did, our applicants are here. I think they're on mute now, but I imagine Caroline may want to say something. And I'm also like Mike, a little sensitive to some of the things that are. Imposed, I'll use that word on us by the county at the entrance to our community. We've had issues around the fifth line before and it is an entrance to our community and I know we want something that's. Attractive and something that, that adds to what we've been trying to do in the past and. So I, I agree, I agree with the planner. At some point we need clarification. On what they think their, their look should be versus what I believe Caroline would like to see. I don't know when it's appropriate for her to make comments, but reading body language, I think she might have some. She needs to unmute, though.
Okay, so council is, anyone else from council wish to speak? Okay. The applicant, Caroline, do you have anything you'd wish to add? You're on, you're on mute.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're fine, yeah.
Um, that, can you explain again about the fencing that they're proposing?
Can I go into that, excuse me for a second? I'm Harry. At the time. County asked for the fencing and when it came before formal council, I brought it up, what is this idea of fencing? And council laughed and I said, well, what's this all about? He said, we've never seen anything so we did this. We're not even going to enter or look at.
Okay, it. Anyone from council wish to, any questions for the applicants? Okay, thank you very much, Caroline.
Thank you.
Anyone, is there any other comments?
We, Bob?
Okay. Yes.
We have no.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll, I mean, I think that'll all come up when we get around to. The, the, the building of, the building permit and stuff. So I, I, I don't think that's a concern at this time. Is it, Jim?
I think we can work with the applicants regarding the site plan. I'm sure that. You know, if they're going to be having alpacas, there'll be some sort of fencing. I think the main thing is just to make sure, as been pointed out. This is an entrance to the town. We want it to be attractive as the applicants do and we want it to be secure as well for whatever uses are being proposed.
Thank you very much. I might also add that Rosemary, this is the item that Rosemary declared a conflict on, so. She is not involved in this. This one. Okay, so the.
Your worship, if I can, if we've concluded that item.
Yes.
Curtis has jumped back on. He had some issues unmuting when we were on the application.
Okay.
Doesn't mind bouncing back to that application. I will. Unmute him, I. I'll ask him to unmute himself.
Yep. Okay, Curtis? No, you just, you muted yourself again, Curtis. Okay, you're unmuted. Do you wish to speak?
I think he's having trouble with his phone settings. He was texting me saying he couldn't get his phone to unmute him.
We don't show that he is muted at the moment. So there could be some other connection issue there.
Would it help if I phoned him and put it on speaker for him to speak via my phone? Is that something we could try?
Sure.
Okay, give me one moment.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna try this.
Okay, Curtis? Go ahead, Curtis.
Turn your volume off on your Zoom call.
Okay, sorry, I turned mine down. Is that better?
Okay, sorry, I turned mine down, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just, I was listening to everything, or trying to listen to everything that was being said. And I didn't know whether there's any questions of me, if anyone had any questions of me as to the proposed drawings and the parking, I heard of some of the parking. So I didn't know whether there's any questions that got out of me.
Does council have any questions of Curtis? I, I think Curtis, there was a couple of questions, but they were answered by, by staff and there would appear to be. Sufficient parking to look after the application on the property, so I, I don't see any problems, Jim, go ahead.
I just, Mr. Mayor, I just wondered if he could confirm that there's a separate entrance from the street onto this property.
Yeah, there's an entrance, a separate entrance on the south side of the building that runs the length of the building and to the back. And then there's a big open area for parking on to the back.
Yeah, and that's, that's your, the driveway is on your property going back?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that, that, that was the only question, so thank you very much, anything else?
I don't have anything else, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, I, I believe that's. We've gone through everything, is, anything from council? Go. Have. Okay, the municipality is accepting written comments, which must be submitted no later than seven days after this meeting. You may email your comments to planning@trenthills.ca. Are there any questions? In which case I would. Make a motion that we adjourn at. Two thirty four, may I have a mover and a seconder, please?
I'll move.
Moved by Rose, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? We'd call the vote, please, Doug?
Deputy Mayor Kelleher McLennan?
Yes.
Councilor Metcalf?
Yes.
Councilor Redden?
Yes.
Councilor Tully?
Yes.
Councilor Bratney?
Yes.
Councilor English?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Carried by seven, your worship, we are adjourned.
We are adjourned, thanks everyone, appreciate it.
Take care.
Cheers.